All right, next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10, by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their questions or comments. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board present reserves the right to limit times. We have no agenda items. For non-agenda items, we would start with David and Sarah Falgu wishing to speak about the gymnastics program.
It's okay.
Members of the board, the statements being made in support of the continuation of the Dearborn Unified Gymnastics Program. We believe that we're all aware of the importance of high school sports. I'm here to urge the boards to reconsider canceling the girls' unified gymnastics program that Coach Dan Lallone has created. As you may or may not know, there are many studies showing a direct correlation between physical activity and academic performance. Since gymnastics isn't your typical sport offered in the lower grade schools prior to high school, its popularity is limited. However, the significant of Coach Lallone's program is very much under-recognized and Coach Lallone's gymnastic programs offers all the important standard benefits of a program and so much more. It is the textbook definition of an all-inclusive program. What this means for the athletes is no student has refused an opportunity to join the team. No student is ever cut from the team. No students ever discouraged from participating regardless of experience. No student is made feel less than because of their lack of experience. No student is limited from growing and developing their gymnastic skills. Because of this, there is also the opportunity for them to experience diversity among their team members, personal development and growth, build confidence through skill, development, and personal growth, to develop acceptance, compassion for others, and for mentoring and leadership regardless of their position on the team. My wife and I's immense appreciation of the coach's all-inclusive, diverse, no limitations philosophy has provided our daughter a character and self-confidence building experiences she was not able to get from any other extracurricular program offered. We believe this program has significant merit, and we hope you will keep an open mind and use forward thinking when making your decision on the future of Coach Lallone and his amazing program. Thank you for your time.
Did she want to speak?
Thank you.
Next is Michelle Wilson Schwartz, also wanting to speak about gymnastics.
You thought you were late for tonight's meeting.
I know. Came right in with you. If you all understood sign language, Sarah may have been able to express herself that way also. I meant to prepare a statement but could not get past the word "why." Why would you eliminate a team based on its number that's small when its heart is so large? Why would you take away an experience from a student no matter what their abilities? Why would you take away the opportunity to do a sport that is so expensive outside of school but is available to all here? We don't ask for uniforms. The equipment has been there since I went to school at Etzel Ford. We do ask for busing. However, we could work around that, and we're willing to work around that with parent drivers and volunteers. We do ask for money for judges. However, we have had most all of the teams in our league offered to help pay for the After following Sarah's father, I don't think I can say much more without breaking down and crying. So I'll just leave you with why. Why cancel a small team because they're small when their heart is large? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Daniel Lallone, speaking again about gymnastics.
Well, those are kind of hard statements to follow. For 31 years, I've coached gymnastics for the Dearborn Public School System. Twenty of those is for head coach. In gymnastics, we've served the Etzel Ford High School, and as a cooperative team, we've also had the Dearborn High School girls combined with us. Because of state rules and the number of students in the high schools, Fortson in several years has come on as their own team. With that, there is no additional charge for anything. We take everybody on. We coach them together. There's no additional cost to the district for whether there's one high school involved or all three. The equipment which they mentioned is the biggest cost factor to doing gymnastics. We have all of our equipment. We've not had to replace any in a long time. As a matter of fact, the last one that we did replace, about 300 pounds of gymnastics parallel bars were removed without district knowledge from a secured storage area at one of the schools. So we never did find out where it went to. It was just 300 pounds of steel. As is said before, we're an inclusive program. Not only do we work with all the girls from the three high schools, but we also, for the last four years, have had students with special needs as part of our school, as part of our team. The nice part about gymnastics is that when you are doing, a student with special needs does not receive any preferential treatment but beyond modifying equipment for safety considerations. Every one of those students is judged on their own merits, their own abilities, and they fall right into where they were if they were not a special need student. It was said that, you know, our enrollment fluctuates very much. So we have had years in the past where we've had 30 girls on the team. We've had girls years where we've had eight girls on the team. So it's very much of a roller coaster. One of the things is we do not have many feeder programs in Dearborn. One of the things that, I will tell you, one of the things that the Tecumseh School System did was they found an area where they could keep the equipment set up, because it does take about 45 minutes to set up and 30 minutes to take down the equipment on a full gymnastics equipment situation. One of the Tecumseh was able to find an area to keep the school, and what they did was they offered a, like a recreation-type program to, excuse me, to the community so that the girls in the middle schools could get an experience on gymnastics and find out if they wanted to continue with it once they got to high school. Their team has grown from, they started with about five girls, and now they're up at about 20-plus girls on their team. So it's been a success for them. As was said, the judges have said that they would be willing to work with us if it's a financial consideration, because right now we are at a membership of our team and transportation. We'd be willing to work out whatever, you know, we needed to do to keep the girls involved. One of the things is gymnastics does exercise a complete, you use most of your muscle groups in gymnastics on the four different apparatus, and you also, there's a lot of, a good deal of mental awareness that has to be done. The girls have to know that if certain tricks do not work, certain skills do not work at one point in their routine, they have to make a choice because they know what the requirements are that they have to fulfill. And, yeah, and one thing I meant to start with, and forgive me, it's not my team. It's the girls. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pressed to run.
Dr. Maleko, I just wonder, since Title IX requires most institutions to have a balanced number of male and female teams, and we have normally male and female teams at the high school level, but what springs to mind is we have a unified hockey team. So I don't know whether it's been considered the, whether there's any potential imbalance to eliminating. I was not aware of the elimination of this program. I used to see them all the time when I was over at Stout, but if you would consider that. Thank you.
Is there anything else? All right, next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Finance Committee meeting, April 8th, Board Report 18-122. Building and Site Committee meeting, April 8th, Board Report 18-123. Executive Session, closed for evaluation, April 8th, Board Report 18-124. Regular P-12 meeting, April 8th, Board Report 18-125. And Executive Session, open for Board vacancy, April 8th, Board Report 18-126. Recommended Action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support. Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Can I attach a unanimous roll?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, please.
Special Reports. Drug Testing. Dr. Maleko and Mr. Amashur.
We brought Kyle Prater with us from Great Lakes Biomedical from Perrysburg, Ohio. He's the expert in the field, and he'll be kind of helping us answer some questions that you might have in a few minutes here. So we had a committee that the high school A.D.s and myself and Abe Mashur, Scott Caseblot, and Deane Charles were involved. We met a few times to discuss this. Okay, so why do random drug testings for athletics? When you talk to the high school principals, they say that one of the biggest problems they have right now with the high school students is vaping. Okay, matter of fact, Kyle and I were talking this morning, or this morning, before the meeting, maybe it felt like this morning. And he said that now that-
Oh, thank you very much.
And he was saying that now that there's nicotine toothpicks, I've never even heard of this, where your kids are taking them into schools and stuff, and it's the newest thing. And then obviously with the opioid crisis out there, you know, and just a general awareness for our kids to be aware of different things going out there that they have to be aware of as far as drugs and that. Okay, so as far as the testing itself, we could mix this up every single time that we actually do a drug testing or drug screening. Great Lakes Biomedical does a 10-panel test. We could mix it up in different types of things. Steroid testing is quite expensive, so we couldn't do this for every single student. And then we would like to do nicotine testing because of the vaping. Okay, so what would this look like? We are making a recommendation that we not only just test all athletes but all students in extracurricular activities. Actually, all students in extracurricular activities that don't get a grade. Okay, so if they're getting a grade for a band class or something, they could not be tested. This would be random urine tests. They would be done once in the fall, once in the winter, once in the spring, and then we would kind of hold one back as maybe another random time during the year. If a student self-reports, if they come to the principal or athletic director and say, "I'm not going to pass the test," if they do that ahead of time, there would be no penalty involved. We would try to give them some counseling in that, but then they would have to follow up with the next two random drug tests they would have to submit tests. Kyle suggested an opt-in program, okay, which basically any parent in the high school, even if your kid isn't involved in extracurricular activity, you could sign your kid up to be part of the program. We're suggesting about 50 kids per school tested in each cycle. Okay, it's a little bit easier to kind of budget that out, know what our costs would be if we, instead of doing a percentage. One point of contact in between the testing facility and the school district, which would be the Director of Student Services. We probably don't want to have a bunch of people knowing when they're going to be showing up to do the drug test, and that would be Abe Mashur. Okay, how much would this cost? Approximately $20,000 per year. That would include like an education program. We would start in the middle school, probably about sixth grade, getting into some PE classes and making a general awareness of all the different types of drugs and things, and just to let kids know what's going on, to talk about new things that are happening. And also, what would we do as far as, you know, if a kid does test positive? Okay, we would want to have a counseling program that they would have to go through. Obviously, we'd have to have a penalty, and we would have to visit our athletic code of conduct. We're suggesting right now, and we'd have to look at what the counseling program would have to go through, and that would be a follow-up if we get board approval on this. Right now, we're thinking about 20% of the sport season, or if they're involved in drama, or we'd have to figure the details out on that. But basically, we would want them to complete a counseling session or go through it, probably missing at least 20% of their sport season. And if there's a second offense, they would probably miss a whole year. A third offense would be they would never be able to participate again. Okay? As a follow-up, if we get approval, we'd have to update our athletic code of conduct. We'd have to look at the actual education program from PE classes. We'd have to choose a counseling program for educating the students that actually test positive. And then we'd have to do like some type of a parent permission program that we would, in athletics, we would add to our physical form. So Kyle was going to talk about what the, what would it look like as far as the actual drug tests and that for the student from perspective.
I kind of have a question that pertains to what you were discussing. The counseling program, are you talking an out-of-house counseling program?
Yes.
Okay, who would cover the cost of that?
Well, according to Deane, there's some programs that would be, I don't know.
Yeah, they'd be very cost-effective. Some of our partnerships do it for free as well.
Yeah, there are already things that we're doing with students with some issues already.
It's through the health initiative.
Yes, that's what I was certainly.
And so on, so.
Okay, so that would be minimal cost.
Correct.
And the district would pick that up? Would the parents be responsible for a portion of that if there was, or it's just district?
No, if somebody needed intensive counseling, then no, that would go to the parents. But as far as the preliminary and, you know, basic level counseling program, that would be through us.
Okay.
The only other thing I'll add, if nobody else has questions at this time before Kyle goes, is, you know, one of the things, we're trying to be proactive, you know, in a lot of ways with this. This isn't trying to catch kids doing something wrong. We're trying to encourage kids to do the right thing as they should, and so that they understand the ramifications of it can be pretty, you know, pretty severe, things that will hit close to home as far as missing, missing part of their sport season and, you know, that type of thing. And one of the things that will allow us to do, and Kyle may touch on this a little bit as well, is, you know, a lot of times people, especially students in high school, middle school, succumb to peer pressure. And one of the things is this will kind of give them an out and say, you know, "Look, I'm too nervous. I don't want to vape, or I don't want to smoke weed," or whatever the situation may be. And, you know, "I just don't know if I'm going to be tested," that type of thing. So it kind of gives them a way out at, you know, parties or other social events and so on, so that they don't get, you know, down the wrong path.
Yeah, the intent is definitely, it's not supposed to be punitive, you know, and Abe's right. You know, you go to a party or something, the idea is, "Hey, I might get tested." You know, "I don't want to screw up, you know, being on the basketball team," or something like that.
And if by chance a child does make that mistake, then we can catch it and help them.
Exactly. Right. And again, it's just more an awareness thing. It's getting, hopefully getting parents to talk about with their kids, too.
Absolutely.
Trust me, Barry.
You know what? I'm loving what I'm hearing, but I know the answer, but I still want you to cover it. We're okay with all the privacy laws. We've covered ourselves. I just want you to kind of like make a statement or tell a people to know that that's going to be a part of it.
Well, Kyle, I don't know how many school districts-
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
He deals with quite a few schools. He could probably tell you the numbers and that, but he deals with it all the time, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kyle Prater. I'm the owner of Great Lakes Biomedical. I'll try to keep this short, because I know you've got a lot of stuff to do. We've been in business about 22 years. We do all sorts of drug testing. We do airline pilots, truck drivers, nuclear power plants, and we do schools. We do about 150 school districts in Michigan, Ohio, and Pennsylvania currently. So the thing that's already been covered here a little bit, but I'll just say it again, you know, is what's the purpose of this program? And it's prevention. It's not a gotcha program. It's not, you know, trying to catch kids, you know, and kick them out of things. Gives kids one reason to say no. Like Saturday night, you know, someone says, "Yeah, want to smoke a joint?" Or whatever it is nowadays, "No, I might get tested." And boom, right there, that's the whole program. Now, there's a lot of, if you Google drug testing for students, you'll find about 28 million responses out there, some for, some against, you know, research this, research that. I'm here to tell you, it does work if you have a whole program. It's not going to eradicate all drug use. It's not going to be a standalone program. It has to be used with education, your community support, and everything like that. But it definitely does work, but, you know, have some information that if you want to read it later, a little dry, but it also has all the schools that we currently are using or servicing. And feel free to call any of them and ask them, you know, "Does the program have an effect? Does it work?" You know, "Don't believe me? Ask the other schools. Ask your partners out there." So one of the other things I want to go over real quick is the myths about drug testing. The first one that comes up is, "Well, if you're going to do drug testing, there goes the football team." You know, "Why are you going to push all these kids away from doing extracurricular activities?" Doesn't happen. Again, "Don't believe me? Call the other schools." We haven't had a single school that had a decrease in participation because of this type of program. It's actually a little bit more lenient than what a lot of schools already have, which is zero tolerance. And, you know, I've got five kids. Zero tolerance sounds good to me, you know. You're right, you're not going to do drugs. We're not going to tolerate it. But so often it was, "Caught you, you're out." And this isn't like this. This is if you do get caught doing drugs on a random drug test. It means, number one, that, well, Plan A failed. Plan A was Saturday night, so, okay, but instead of saying, you know, "You're out," we're going to say, "You know what? We'd like you to do this counseling. We'd like to find out, are you just making some bad decisions? Are you seriously having a problem here? Let's get you some help." There's going to be a little bit of bite to it, you know, some loss of a little bit of participation, but you know what? We want you to stay. Stay part of the team. Stay part of the family. That's what we want you to do. So even though it sounds like it's a real heavy-handed way to do things, it's actually quite the opposite, and there's usually about 85% parental support. And interestingly enough, there's usually about over 50% student support, too, which sometimes you don't think that. It seems, you know, like, "Leave me alone, you know, don't do anything." But past surveys that I didn't do, other schools did, that's what they found. So just real quick, how does this work? Is it a big, long process and really involved? And no. Again, I've been doing this for a lot of years, and I understand that kids are here to learn. They're not here to do drug tests, and you've got enough problems administration-wise to keep your time up, so we want to make it as quick and painless as possible. We do all the picking of the students. We get a list of the students. We put it into our random number generator, same one we use for our truck drivers and such. We will decide on a date and time with whoever our designated person is, and that's a real specific word I use there, because designated person means I talk to one or two people. I don't talk to other coaches or teachers or whatever. It's just whoever that is, that's who we talk to. We say, "You know, Wednesday at 10 o'clock, we're going to come and do the test." Great, we'll show up Wednesday at 10 o'clock after we have already emailed the list. When we get here, and we do it right on-site here, or whatever school that we're at, we'll get there, we'll set up real quick, takes about five minutes. Kids will come down. If I was like a drug test student that was called down, you know, I'd come down to the area and I'd say, "Hi, my name's Johnny Smith. I was called down here." We would either check ID, or normally it's just our designated person is here saying, "Yeah, that's Johnny Smith." Say, "Great, Johnny, here's a cup. You're number 13. Need to provide a specimen in the bathroom there. When you're done, bring it back and sign out." Johnny does that. He provides a specimen, signs out his name, Johnny Smith, cup number 13, goes back to class. So in his world, you know, five minutes and you're done. Well, they can't go, maybe a little bit longer, but, you know, five minutes, in and out, and you're done. We will screen the test right on-site. So that means that we don't have to have a bunch of paperwork and spend a bunch of time, you know, doing all that type of stuff. We screen it right on-site, and what we hope for is everybody will be negative, and we'll go to our designated person and say, "You're all good? We'll see you next time." But what if we get a non-negative? A non-negative, I'm not saying positive, that's like my other word that I use, not saying positive, a non-negative. Let's say it's amphetamines, okay? It's non-negative for amphetamines. We will fill out the same chain of custody like a truck driver, a bus driver does, send it to the certified lab. Who's going to sign that? The designated person, because they're acting as the parent, just as the teachers and such do. Why doesn't Johnny sign it? Johnny's 15 and can't legally sign anything anyway. So, send it to the certified lab. They put it through the GCMS gas chromatograph machine, says, "Yep, that's amphetamines." We send that to our medical review officer, who is a physician, who specializes in drug testing, and they'll look at it and say, "Yep, that's amphetamines." He will call the parent that we have the information from, you know, the contact information, and say, "Mrs. Smith, Johnny was at a test like two days ago. Is he on any medications currently?" And mom might say, "Well, he's on ADHD medication, Adderall or something." "Okay, great. Could you send me that script?" Okay, sends the script over. We report that back to the designated person as negative. Okay, a lot of back and forth there and everything. It's going to take a couple of days. What do you do with Johnny in the meantime? Nothing. He doesn't even know what's going on until mom might say, "Hey, did you take a test a few days ago because a doctor called?" So, the other situation, without going through all of it, let's say that it's opioids, marijuana, something that you don't have a prescription for, same thing. There's checks and balances the whole way, except the MRO will call and ask for any medications. There aren't any. The designated person will get a report that says, "That's positive." And at that point, if there wants to be any more discussion with the parents, they can with the MRO or us, whatever, but, you know, positive test, if there's nothing else to say that that's how they got the drugs in their system, including nicotine, if you want to test for that, that's what it is. Some of the other things that we have available, I'd just like to throw out there, because I call it advertising for our type of business. Some kids might say, "You know what? Go ahead and have your drug test. I prefer alcohol anyway, and I know that if I drink a six-pack on Saturday night and you hit me with a breathalyzer on Monday, it won't show." And they're right. But we have a test called ETG alcohol. Never say the whole name. It's too long and confusing for me. But ETG alcohol goes back up to 80 hours. So you can test up to like three days later and still find someone that had beverage alcohol in their system. Would you use it all the time? It's up to you. It's up to you. Our tests are all kind of mix and match, so it'd be great to test everybody for everything, but you can't afford it. We understand, you've got budgets and such, so you can decide what you want to do in each test, kind of like cafeteria-style testing. So that's it. That's what I have.
Okay, Dr. Mead.
Did I hear you right that there's 50 students that are being assessed?
That's what we came up. It was just a...
Is this for all of our athletes?
Well, it's anybody who's in an extracurricular activity. So it'd be 50 at each of the three high schools in the fall, and 50 in the winter, and 50 in the spring.
By high school, 50 by, and so that random sample covers the end?
Right. So basically, what we would do at each of the high schools, we'd come up with a list. So it'd be several hundred for each of the schools, and we'd send it to Kyle.
All right.
He'd assign everybody a number, and then randomly pick numbers.
I think that's inadequate numbers, that's just my question.
Yes, Trusty McDonald. Real simple, real quickly, you said that you can mix and match whatever substances are tested for, and you said that that can be up to our discretion, but I'm assuming that each series of tests are the same thing it'd be tested for. It's not on an individual student basis.
Yeah, what it is is, you know, there's lots of different panels of tests, and again, you can't afford to test everybody. So what we do is marijuana, cocaine, opiates, there's like three ones that are always on there. But let's say that you hear that OxyContin is coming around your area, because every place is a little different. You can give us a call and say, "Hey, make sure that that's on there." And if you don't have anything in particular, we'll also rotate them, because if some, if somebody's saying, "Well, do they test for that?" The answer isn't yes or no. The answer is, "Yes, we can."
Okay.
And that includes steroids, that includes that alcohol and nicotine, so yes, we can. Will you every time? It's up to you.
Okay.
Actually, that was my question. Do you test for steroids or opioids?
Opioids, especially nowadays, yeah. And there's, including synthetics and et cetera, et cetera. There's all these different classes, and again, it's kind of like a cafeteria-style. Steroids, steroids are expensive. Will you test for them? That's up to you. If you hear something or suspect something in particular, we can put that on there, or you can say, "You know what? Every tenth test that you do puts steroids on there." Whatever way you want to do it, because I understand you've got to keep your budget also.
Right. Trusty Thorpe.
I'm glad we're giving this presentation. This was an issue that I had first gotten more information on at a school board conference a year ago, specifically on opioids, but I'm glad we're looking at other topics, because there's no shortage of stories that I hear from the high schools where kids have a hard time even going into the bathroom because everyone's smoking in there. They're just smoking different things than we did 20, 30 years ago. So I'm glad that the district is looking at this.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to just make a statement, though. We've got close to 20,000, 21,000 students. We're talking randomly testing 50 in extracurricular and sports. That leaves a whole segment of the student population that is going to go unrecognized. How much do we really think that this is going to dissuade those students? I mean, we're going to be looking at students who we can go after technically, but all the other student body is going to be left to their own devices still. I'm going to assume right now we do nothing. It's only if we accidentally catch them drinking after the fact, or smoking in the bathroom, or whatever. But we're not actively drug testing at this point, any of our student body. Now, we're going to look at those who are engaged in something extracurricular. Hopefully, they'll be in the building the day we select to go in and test, number one. Number two, like I said, that still leaves a whole large segment of the population. I'm not sure what size school districts that you service at this point in time, if they're as large as we are. So I don't know whether is this really other than, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I have any issue with targeting one segment of the student population at this point, because that's all we can do. But I'm not, I'm just not so certain how effective this is going to be overall, except for this, this small group of the student population who's involved in extracurriculars. We're going to be missing a whole heck of a lot of other students in the process still. And what are we, do we have any plans in the future to deal with that?
Well, legally, we can't test the general population, so there's nothing we can do about that. Or any, any class, anyone that receives a grade for a class, you can't, you can't test there, so that's, you know, those are some of the legal restrictions that we have.
Yes, Trusty McDonald.
I just caught part of your question, but I think I have the gist of it. I just think although it wouldn't be comprehensive, I think this is a really good start, because, like you said, especially with athletes, they are passionate about their athletics, or those involved in special, or extracurricular activities. So I do think that, like you said, that's a really good out for them to say, "No, thank you, I might be tested, and this is important to me." So just having that out, I think it's, although it doesn't encompass everybody, I think it's a good benefit to them.
Well, it's not a start, because it doesn't go any further, so it's not really a start. It's a, it's a product.
With the opt-in program, though, you can, if you promote your opt-in program, kind of like a drug-free club type thing, you can raise your numbers considerably. Most schools, that's kind of what I do, is tell you what other schools do, because we have some larger school districts also, and we bring more people in so we can do it quicker. We have one school that we do about 1,000 kids, and we do it about six hours. So we can handle that part of it. But most schools, if they add all the extracurriculars, and sometimes they talk about parking and everything, because again, I hear the discussions, they normally are saying that they get around 75 to 80-ish percent of the student body is like involved with something. And then maybe another 5% on top of that if you promote the opt-in program. So you can get, you know, like three-quarters of your, your population in the pool, anyway.
Great, Trusty Moser.
Question, if, so if the student tests non-negative, do they, how do they get readmitted to extracurricular? Do they get tested again to make sure that they're now drug-free?
Well, non-negative is Kyle's term. So it's not, it's not yet positive. So if it is positive, okay, so if it's non-negative and, like you said, everything checks out and everything is good, then they're, you know, continue as they work.
Right, but if they test positive?
If they test positive, if they test positive, then we still would want them, as Chuck said, we still want them to be as part of the family, as Kyle said, we still want them to be part of the family. So it would still be part of the team. However, we'd have, you know, some restrictions on them where they couldn't play for 20% of the season or what have you. Where it's kind of, it falls into line with a lot of what we're doing with our restorative work. You know, rather than suspending kids, you know, students for 20 or 30 days, or even 10 days, you know, we try to reduce it, or even five days sometimes, we try to reduce it by having the restorative, restorative component to the discipline.
Okay. Trusty Barrett.
Kyle, the opt-in program, so if I'm a father and I suspect my son or daughter is having some issues, is that what you're talking about? I can sign some forms and...
Yes, except it's not only if you just suspect, it's also just, let's just say peace of mind, because I, again, I've got five kids, so instead of looking through the sock drawer more and more and et cetera, et cetera, it's like if, if you opt the kid in, and then what if your, your son or daughter then says, "Why'd you do that?" It's like, well, let's talk then. You know, you have a problem? Again, I'm a little old-school with parenting, but, you know, let's talk about this. Yes, you're in. And what happens if they do get caught? Well, you tell mom and dad. But we have instances where just a lot of parents, they don't really want to have that conversation. They should, but they don't. And then the ones that do have a concern, you know, what do you do? Do you take your kid to the family doctor and you say, "Look, I'm going to haul you in the car," or do you take, you know, it's hard for them. So we do get a lot of calls, well, I don't get them, the schools get some calls and say, "Hey, can you make sure, you know, here's my story, can you make sure that Johnny was, you know, on the next test, whatever, because he's in an opt-in program?" It's just something nice that you can have with the parents, because I get it, you know, if you're suspicious and thought, what do you, what do you do? And it's just one way that we can help.
Never apologize for old-time parenting. I can share with you on that point what you just said. There was a young man about 10 years ago that I was kind of mentoring, and we suspected something, and I asked him, and I checked with his parents, and they were okay with me taking him to the lab and get blood work, and got the results, and I remember the lab technician saying something like, "Oh, he must have been..." It's not positive, but it's not negative. He must have been around students, da-da-da-da. I think she kind of sugar-coated things. Five years later, the young man tells me, "I smoked a joint at lunchtime."
Yeah.
So I guess, what is the law? What is the law if like a social worker, a counselor, or principal suspects something? If they want to bring it to our attention? What does the law say about that?
That's more of a reasonable suspicion.
Yeah.
And then I, I'm going to give that back to you guys, because that's probably already in your policy.
Yeah, so we can do it, too. That's fine.
Good.
Okay, yeah. I thought you knew, so we can...
Well, yeah, I do, but it's normally goes, that, that part normally goes back to the school, though.
Sure.
Because the way I, I tell people, like, we test and report. And if someone, if a school says, "Hey, add these names on the list," and then there's usually a story with something happened at a party, and then now they have a reasonable suspicion and such, then we can do that. And it's just something that's, that's kind of nice, and since we're coming, we can do that.
And checking with our attorneys, we can use reasonable suspicion to test a kid. So for example, if a football coach says, hey, you know, or any coach for that matter says, "Hey, this is the situation, I'm a little nervous about him, I've been hearing a lot of rumors from other athletes or what have you that he might be using," we can use reasonable suspicion to draw that person's name as one of the people who is, who are being tested.
That's the football coach. What if it's a student that's just there pending school, not doing extracurricular activities? Same situation?
No, no, if it's a student, no, for, for that, no, because there's no consequences we can give them.
But if they're opted in?
If they're opted in, then yes. But if they're not opted in, and they're sleeping in class, they're very lethargic, they're not really doing anything academically, no, we can't pull their name and test them if they're not opted in.
Just one more thing. You're talking about three times a year, I think, at this point is what you were doing.